I would like to introduce to the town to Brian Hatchey. Am I saying that right? Brian Hatchey is our new associate member and comes to us with a lot of experience. And welcome the board and maybe you'll get to sit down on a special permit, but appreciate your interest and welcome.
Thank you.
First order of business is approval of minutes from 10:21 19.
I want to vote for what you'd have on your, on the table when you got here, a revised set of minutes. And you'll notice some yellow highlighting. We changed today the language where you see it yellow because it needed to be changed. It wasn't, there was typos. And so I'm going to ask you to vote to adopt these revised minutes as opposed to the ones that you received in your packets originally.
All right.
Motion to approve revised minutes.
Let's go second up.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pro, opposed, unanimous. Okay, 7:05. We have a discussion, site plan approval with town council attorney David DeLuca. Dave, come on up. And Paul and I were talking, we asked attorney DeLuca to come in tonight to kind of refresh the board a little bit, maybe a little learning session for us and on decision criteria and on site plan approval in particular, on, you know, what, how far we can go as a town to approve or disapprove, you know, based on criteria. We all see things that we maybe don't like, but in the end, if we, if we don't approve something, we, the board has to write a decision and that decision has to be based on criteria. And to be honest with you, it, I mean, if it goes through an appeal process, it has to be strong enough to hold up in an appeal. And, and you know, so I don't know, Paul, if you want to add anything and then we'll let attorney DeLuca jump in and...
So we, the board's been reviewing a case and we, at 32 Broad Street, the McDonald's restaurant, site plan application. And we have asked the applicant to do more than what they're proposing to do on a project. And, you know, the site has some shortcomings and we were hoping that with a site plan review application in front of the planning board, that there'll be an opportunity to address some of those shortcomings. And as an example, we had talked about how the project includes saw cutting the pavement in one area of the parking lot near the building and they're going to pour concrete and make a handicapped parking space there. Add another location to the rear of the, the building facing it off to the left corner, there's a catch basin there for stormwater and it's over time, it's collapsed down and it needs to be jacked back up and leveled off, you know, put at the right elevation. And they've, they've agreed to do that and they're going to saw cut a square around that catch basin, they're going to put blocks to build up the right height and, and then patch around it. And in situations like that, where one, the parking lot's already old and two, they're going to be saw cutting it, when you do something like that, where they make the cuts, that's a place where water will sit and when water freezes, it expands and this is how we get potholes and how pavement can deteriorate faster when it's got some kind of a rut or a cut or a crack or something. And so we had asked the applicant, we recommended that they just, now it's time to repave the parking lot. And they flat out have refused a couple of times and they said that it's, it's too expensive and it's not in the budget. As a, as a reasonable fallback, we asked them to seal coat, seal the whole parking lot and re-stripe it. It'll, you know, the pavement underneath, you know, will still be old, but at least there'll be a coat, a seal coat over to seal it off, seal the cracks and re-stripe it and it'll look almost like a brand new parking lot. We were told that that's $10,000, that's not in the budget. And so we've kind of reached a little bit of a stalemate with, with this particular applicant where we were recommending that they, you know, do more landscaping, do some certain things to improve the property and they're saying, you know, it's not enough part of our projects, not in the budget. It appeared at the end of the last meeting that after the board voted to deny the special permit for the internally illuminated signs, it appeared that the board was frustrated and was about to take the same action on the site plan. And we got into a little bit of a discussion with the applicant about, you know, how that, whether we should make certain things conditions or whatnot. And it was at that point decided that the hearing would be continued. It was supposed to be continued to tonight. They've submitted a written request asking to continue it to our next meeting and we're going to come back to the table with them at our next meeting. But I thought, based on our discussion where the board put the question to me, you know, can we deny a site plan approval or what are the implications of denying one and what's that appeal process? I was a little hesitant in my answers and so I thought it'd be a good idea to invite attorney DeLuca in to, to talk to the board, to be able to answer your questions on that and to hopefully kind of keep us on course so that we don't end up getting an appeal.
Good to be here. Nice to see you again. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
I hope you brought your bike helmet. You'll need it for this point. Yes, I have had a chance to, to talk with Paul at some length. I've had some experience actually working on similar cases that involve site plan, what's in your book as site plan approval and the, the dimensions of, of that approval process as compared with the very usual kinds of process that you're familiar with, which more likely have to do with special permits. And the kind of authority that you have and leverage, I guess is a better word to use, that you have in the special permit process. Historically, site plan, what we call site plan approval has always been called, and I think more appropriately, site plan review. Site plan review is for the most part a must issue type of review. It customarily had been in history, had been an opportunity for principals from different departments to get together around a table to discuss the logistics of a, of a big project. It could be police, fire, engineering, electric light, other big departments who all take a look at the same plan and maybe have some suggestions for a, an applicant, look, can you move this over here, can you move that over there? The underlying understanding however, is that the zoning that's, that supports this project is in fact in place and that the project is otherwise compliant with the zoning process. And, and that the site plan review is really a chance for everyone to get on the same page. Now that's evolved in time to a process that, that now is called interestingly, site plan approval, which sort of takes it up a little bit of a notch. And, and a lot of times you see site plan approval blended with a special permit process. So the two get kind of melded together. And we all know that you have the authority and the special permit process. In the site plan approval process, there's actually a different quantum of vote that's required. Special permit is super majority, site plan review or site plan approval by its, its own terms is a majority vote. So right away, there's, there's that difference. And I, you know, I, I think it's important for your board to sort of separate your special permit type of thinking and in the, the kind of guidelines you have for special permit as compared with site plan approval. This is entirely a creation of zoning bylaws. There is no place in the statute that talks about site plan approval. Every town has one, but it's not a statewide requirement to have this site plan review or site plan approval process. We, it started out as a matter of convenience, now it's been formalized in, in most of the zoning bylaws that I have seen. And as you recall, this is kind of a package that we adopted that had these provisions that are, that were existent in that package. And Paul and I reviewed some of the details of that and this, again, very customarily involves a, a site plan approval process that really depends upon meeting certain criteria. The criteria are listed in your site plan approval process. It, it sort of dictates what, what the plan should have. Remember, this could be a process with everyone around a table, what, what should those plans show? Well, the plan should have, you know, a locus plan that's brought to correct scale, a site layout, should show topography and drainage, a utility plan and landscape. And as we go further into the, the site plan approval process, by your bylaw, we have the section called approval. What, what kinds of things need to be met in order to gain approval? So it, you understand that this is a project that is otherwise permitted by zoning without the need for any other relief, except in this case, you have a special permit request for signage. Otherwise, this is a, this is a compliant, a project that's compliant with zoning. So the, the site plan approval process focuses however on criteria and it asks for the, the applicant to provide evidence on each of the points that are in the approval criteria. I don't think there's been any issue with, with this applicant providing you with, with that information or at least the, the evidence that meet, that addresses the criteria. The approval provision in this, in this bylaw is, I think, of some significance because it states that the site plan approval shall be granted upon determination by the board that the plan meets the following standards and we just saw them, one through 10. But then this is a significant statement here and it says, "The board may impose reasonable conditions at the expense of the applicant to implement these standards." Now I think now we get right to the heart of the matter that was articulated by Mr. Al Kiotis. Do we have the leverage? Do you have the authority to require, you know, the resurfacing of a parking lot in this site plan approval process? And my answer to that is lawyerly maybe. And, and what I mean by that is, I suggested to Paul that in order for this to work, you need to be able to draw a direct line between two data points. One is your request for a new surface, a new parking lot and, and one of these standards that may have to do with pedestrian vehicle safety, maybe it has something to do with visible intrusion by controlling parking, storage or other outdoor service areas. It may have something to do with groundwater, it may have something to do with stormwater drainage, but you better be able to draw a straight line between, you know, what it is that you think is necessary for site plan approval and one of these, one or more of these standards that, you know, are articulated in your bylaw. Because if we can't do that, then we're going to have a difficult case defending. Court's going to require, you know, sort of a straight line application between point A and point B in order for us to be able to defend a denial of site plan approval, which again, in history, had always been just simply a review, a must issue review. Now, we do have, by way of our own bylaw, a little bit more leverage than we had before, but let's make sure it's, it's, it's founded on, you know, good evidence and is within our standards articulated in the bylaw.
I think one of the questions that, that comes up a lot, attorney, is if, like on green space and primarily our issues with any site plan approval, usually the majority of it wraps around landscaping.
Yep.
We have, in our bylaw, we have a requirement for X amount of green space in any project. If the applicant meets that requirement, we can ask for, we can ask for more, there's no question, there's no harm in asking. But if they, for whatever, if, you know, Joe's shop, Joe's shopping mall says, no, we've met the requirement, we're not going any further. I mean, any, to me, and I'm obviously not a lawyer, but any judge would say, your bylaw says you need X amount, they are giving you that amount. They've met the, they've met the fact that you would like more, either change your bylaw, but they've met, they've met their requirement. So that doesn't cut.
I, you know, I can't disagree with your logic in that.
Yeah.
I, I would say to you that if you want, if you believe that you should extend beyond what your, your bylaw quantifies and rely on, on the sentence in, in our approval process that says the board may impose reasonable conditions, so may is permissive, reasonable is always open to debate, conditions at the expense of the applicant to, to meet these standards. You better be able to tie...
Say that we need more landscaping because...
Because we have a problem with stormwater management or we have a problem with, in this case, minimizing glare from headlights or light intrusion. You, you really need to draw it to a line connection.
That's, that's good. Joe, any questions?
The only thing I'm, another thing they talk about is pedestrian and vehicular safety and I, when it comes to this parking lot, that, just for an example, I'm just wondering if, if that would apply, I guess the, if it was all cracked up or something or dangerous to walk on because it was...
They could trip or something.
Such disrepair, then that may apply, but I'm not, I'm not sure if that, how bad that is down there. I did go through there quickly. I did notice there was, on the right-hand side of the building, in the parking lot, there were some cracks. I don't know how bad they were.
But I, I look at it as any decision that we make, not, not just this particular one, but any one down the road or one we've made in the past. And I think reasonable also, you know, to me, I, I look at reasonable and I look at, you know, dollar amounts, you know, dollar. If, if it's a small little mom and pop store and we're going to ask them to put $100,000 into something, well, that's not being reasonable. Putting up a couple of stop signs or putting a crosswalk in or, you know, a ramp off a curbing are kind of reasonable requests to me. You know, I, I thought in this particular case, the seal coating was, was a fair compromise, but that still may come. But I mean, I, I guess my, my point is at what point can you stop pushing? You know, if you can't draw that line, then, then you've, you've gone over the...
I think you can always sometimes substitute for the word reasonable, proportionality. You want to come up with something that's in proportion to the, the construction we're talking about. If it's, you know, if it's a, a big project that would be reasonable to have some big asks in there.
Yeah.
If it's a small project, then maybe not.
It's good.
So something that's in proportion to the, to the work that's being proposed, I think is, is a good guideline.
Proportion money wise?
Yeah, could be, could be money. I mean, if this is a, if this is a $6 million project, having a $100,000 ask is not out of proportion. If it's, you know, if it's a $100,000 project, having a $3 million ask is out of proportion.
Okay, but I think one of the issues with this particular project for me, I'm not speaking for anybody else, is that they're keeping it really low budget so, you know, $20,000 is unreasonable because they're not spending much money. They're refacing the building, they're putting some new, I mean, it, you know, it's a substantial amount of money on its face, but it's not, they're doing a, they're ironing the front of their shirt. They're not doing the whole shirt.
Is that planning board talk?
No, I speak for me. And if you say, I mean, then why ask us to vote on it if we, I mean, if we may do it and it's reasonable, which is a relative term...
Yep.
...I know, then we have to go to court and you have to defend what's reasonable.
Again, and I can't, I can't give you any more guidance than that, other than to say, okay, what's in proportion?
Yeah.
So how much are they spending voluntarily?
Right.
And what your ask is, is it, is it in proportion to what they're spending voluntarily? You just happen to have a different, maybe a different priority in terms of the standards that you have in mind that...
I think Debbie made a point and Al too, on this particular case, we may not get them back in front of us for another, I mean, they really haven't done much in that since the late 60s.
Right.
They've done a few things, but not, not any great things and Debbie's point, it was a good point, that, you know, this is our one opportunity to get them to, to clean up their act. I mean, they're, they're doing this, you know, we may not get them in front of us for another 30 years. And, you know, at what point, you know, it's a kind of a good point, but it, but it, you know, it goes, again, it goes back to how far do we push?
Yeah.
And before we say, okay, you've done enough or, you know, whatever.
Well, I, you know, I, I wish I could give you, you know, anything, you know, something more certain than that, but it's, you know, it's a judgment call at the end of the day and, and I've had section 17 appeals on, on site plan approvals, just the same way as I do on variances and special permits.
Yeah.
It goes through the same process and ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, judge is going to, going to hear the case, it's going to make a de novo determination whether or not your board was, was reasonable and in the way they approached it, in the way they processed it. And as, you know, we'll, we'll take the, the board's sort of position as a, not, not as the, the authority in the case, but because they have the right to review it, but we'll give deference to, to the board's decision and decision-making profit, process. But at the end of the day, we'll, we'll have to decide on the law.
Rob, anything, questions, you're the, the new guy, any, this is kind of new to you, so anything that...
I think I just have to kind of dig into that section and kind of process, you know, let it sit and process and...
I think what sticks with me, what attorney DeLuca said is that draw that line, draw that straight line.
Yeah, that's...
So that, because you have to defend it. Paul and Patrick write the decision, we, we look at the decision, we agree with it and, and if it's, you know, favorable or unfavorable, if, if it's unfavorable, to defend it, you have to say, we denied it because of this and, and we feel that it directly points to this criteria. And, you know, I mean, we just can't go in and say we didn't like the color.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, Brian, you're new. We'll get back to you, Mrs. Holman. You're brand new to this. Anything that...
The only question is, when you talk about reasonableness, is it the size, this is a different applicant than some little mom and pop operation?
Mm-hmm.
Does the fact that you're dealing with a huge company that has significant resources play into that?
I'm not so, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not so persuaded by that as I am with the project costs.
Yeah, because it's a franchise.
Yeah, so I, what I would be guided by is what they're spending voluntarily and what that number looks like and compared with what your ask is.
That's a good point.
And if, if there's some proportionality in that, then I feel, I, I feel like that's a more defensible approach. The fact that it's McDonald's as compared with, you know, Homewood Associates, who's a local business...
Take it all hands over.
Yeah.
No, I know. I know.
Nobody kid you.
That, that, you know, wouldn't guide me as much as, as, you know, hey, look, they're voluntarily spending X amount of dollars to do whatever it is that they want to do because they have the right to do it. And, 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 you know, we think that we have, you know, a standard that needs to be addressed and what we're asking is for something to be done that, that directly relates to that standard, that's, that's at a dollar amount, that's, you know, in proportion.
So do we guess at the amount or do we ask them how much they're spending? My guess is they're going to go about, they're going to go under 200. Is that a...
Well, we know because it's, they're pulling a permit.
They're going to pull a permit.
They're going to pull a permit.
Okay.
The, the building inspector has an estimated...
But we have to do it before they pull the permit.
Well, yeah, yeah, so, you know, we have to, we act before that. They have shared some numbers with us and I remember when, when we asked about the seal coating, they, they said that was $10,000. And I think they, they mentioned what the cost of totally repaving was and I'm...
They said it was about 80.
Yeah.
To, to grind it and repave.
So, so those are a couple of numbers that you can plug into the proportionality test of what's reasonable, given, you know, they, they're not going in and gutting that store, they're not tearing it down, building a new one like they did on Route 1. They're not going in and gutting the store and redoing it on the inside, they're going in and doing handicapped accessible improvements to make the building and the parking lot ADA compliant. And, and they were requesting some new signage on the outside of the building, so they...
And they're re-siding that whole building with that razor or whatever they call it, the gray stuff?
Yeah, so they're, they're putting new facade on the building and, and, you know, proposing new signs and lighting and so that's, that's the scope of the project. And I guess if you look at proportionally the cost of repaving the whole parking lot along with that scope, you know, that might not equate. But if we talked about something a little more reasonable like seal coating, that does seem like proportionally that could fit into the project and it's not an unreasonable request.
So is proportionately 10%? Is there a, is there some kind of...
There's no...
I mean, I know it's relative.
Yeah.
But do we have any idea where we're at? We at 500 or we, we won't know that until they pull their...
I mean, I think that they've shared that, but we could ask again, the project manager, you know, what, you know, can you go over the scope of the project? Can you tell us, you know, what your estimated project budget is? And, and I think she'll be willing to kind of share that information.
And attorney DeLuca, you said, do we have any leverage? We don't have any leverage.
No, you do. You said, you do. By, by virtue of the...
Well, I can draw the line, but that doesn't mean that the guy that's appealing it is going to, you know, that's why we're in, that, why we argue the constitution. I mean, you know, I see it as a logical thing, that you need to improve your property, not just the inside, your outside what's going to bring you more customers. They're, they're a town business, they take up a huge space. I'm not a, you know, I don't want to throw the global warming thing around, but they should have more green in the parking lot that's never used. Everybody agrees with it. But how do, what is our leverage? What can we, I'm not trying to bankrupt them, I'm just trying to make it look a little nicer.
Agreed. And, and no one questions your motive in that, but there's two things. One, what it is that you're asking for needs to be, in my opinion, proportional and reasonable to what the total project, scope of the project might be. That's, that's number one. And number two, whatever it is that you're asking, needs to be tied to a standard and justified by, you know, a, a standard that must be met for the site plan approval. So for example, if someone comes in for a, a permit to redo the roof of their building and you say, well, look, we're not going to issue that permit... uh, and, um, you say, well, look, we're not gonna issue that permit to do redo the roof until you do the landscaping that we'd like to see out front. There's no relationship between those two, uh, that, you know, would, would justify holding up a, a permit for the roof. So I, I want to make sure that, that, of two things, that, that what the ask is, is reasonable in proportion to the, the amount of work that's, that's proposed, that they're gonna do voluntarily, uh, and two, that we tie it directly to some standard that we need to have met in approval process. Is that possible?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Well, we make a bargain. Because, uh, listen, at some point in time, I say this all the time, at some point in time, I'm gonna be standing in front of a Superior Court judge, and I want to be able to feel comfortable that I have a case that's defensible on, on, you know, reasonable grounds. That's all. Uh, uh, because I, I, there's no way that I can defend a case where I, my, my only defense is that, you know what, Judge? The board didn't like this project.
They didn't like the color?
Yeah, that, that's not gonna get me anywhere.
Right.
It's more than the color, though. It is more than the color.
Well, no, I was just using that as.
I, I understand, and I understand everybody's points, and I know, I, I know I don't have agreement here, however, I'm trying to find the line, because everything's negotiation.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and we put in this, is this, uh, Mr. Boboskis that we made? Did we change the may to shall? I mean, we may. Again, your attorneys write it, and it's a little ambiguous, but it does say we may.
We may impose reasonable conditions.
And reasonable is a relative term.
Yep.
Again.
Yep.
Um.
But it, to implement the standards, and that means we've gotta come over here and we've gotta be able to check off, uh, at least one of those that, you know.
You'd be happy with one?
It's gotta be a strong one.
Yeah, I, at least one that, that is tied directly to your ask.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I think that's helpful. Thank you.
Paul, anything else?
No, I think, I think that, that's, um, that's very helpful.
I think it's very helpful.
David summarized, um, the key points, is that any request that we have that's not proposed as part of a project, it has to be a reasonable request, and it has to be proportional to the project, and that it has to connect to, um, one or more of the criteria listed under approval in section ten point five eleven, the site plan approval section.
Yep. Uh, then I, I think, it's not gonna be, you know, a, 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 a perfect case, but it gives us very good, you know, foundation going forward in the event of an appeal, so.
I think that's great. Uh, Joey, you all set?
All set.
Well, I, uh, thank you. The last thing before you go, Dave, I always ask, you know, you, you know these bylaws inside and out, and I mean, if you ever see something in there that, like, on, on site plan approval, where you think we've missed the boat, or if we change a couple of words, it would tighten it up a little bit, or whatever, please let us know, and, uh, you know, we'll talk about it, because, uh, you know, you, it's, uh, you, you have to defend us, and you, you know what courts are looking for, and, and you know what, what flies, what doesn't fly, and so anything that, that we can do to tighten things up, or, or make them less ambiguous, uh, is always helpful. So again, I appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you all. Good luck, Brian.
Appreciate it. I think it was very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One line. I only have to draw one straight line.
You better do it with a rule of all, Debbie.
Paul's avoiding me at all costs over there. He's even.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we're gonna talk about setting a performance bond and release lots for power rain. Uh, as you know, at our last meeting when Yuri was here, um, I think it was Rob that, that, uh, it may have been Rob, that.
Yeah.
Noticed that we had nothing on the walls, and, uh, that was a great catch. So we continued it. We went back to the town engineer and asked him to, uh, revisit the, uh, what it would take to complete the walls, um, and he came up with a new number, uh, of, a total of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Can I ask what the last one was, because I have?
I think it was seven, I want to say it was like seven.
Seventy-five.
Seven fifty, or in that, in that.
So the, um.
Where's retaining walls on here? I can't.
On page two.
Are they called something else?
Go down.
Oh, reta- block retaining wall, got it.
Yeah.
Block retaining wall, and the estimate, estimated cost of that was thirty-nine thousand, six hundred. That's under forty thousand, so the other one was just under forty thousand, and just got added. Um, we did, I did go back and check to see if those retaining walls were located within the right-of-way itself, and they were on, they're on a lot, or lots. So I think that's the reason, in Mark's defense, why he didn't include it, because he's looking at, what's it gonna cost to build the road that's in the right-of-way? Um, and so it's on a, it's on a private lot. But having said that, um, Rob was right, in that you, you're not gonna build that road without building the wall, um, to stabilize the base below it, and so it really was, um, a good catch to add that in and include it in the cost estimate for the road construction.
So you're driving up the road, the river's over here.
Yep.
The wall's gonna be in front of the houses?
No, on the riverside.
On the riverside, down, down the slope.
As the slopes down to the river, they've gotta like, build that wall and then fill that level area.
Fall down like this?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, yeah, and, and there, there's more than one wall there, is there are some walls up on the, on the other side, behind the houses, to also try to, you know, deal with that slope, um, and provide, you know, flat areas to build the homes. So, um, Yuri, um, I told Yuri he didn't have to be here. He reported back that he's still working with his bank to get the tri-party agreement in place. And had he had that ready to go, he would have been here tonight asking the board to release the covenant, as well as set the bond. But since he doesn't have that in place right now.
We'll set the bond.
We're just asking the board to vote to set the bond, um, at the amount that's recommended by the town engineer. And, um, once that happens, I'll convey that number to Yuri, they'll plug it into the tri-party agreement. He'll give us a draft of the tri-party agreement, and I told him that we'd like that in advance of the next meeting, so that the board can have that to read. And I'll probably take the tri-party agreement and, um, send it to town council to look at, um, just to make sure it's got everything it needs to have in it to protect the town.
Can I ask one question, Paul? Just, uh, curiosity, uh, on this wall, that now that it, we know it's on a private property, and it's basically holding up a road that is on public property. If, for some reason, down the road, pun, down the road, the wall has any kind of failure, uh, gives way, or whatever, and, you know, for whatever road damages the, the right-of-way, um, the owner of that, the homeowner of that property, if they don't want, what assurances, I think, does the town have that if the homeowner says, well, you know, yeah, I bought the thing and I have the wall, but I'm not fixing the wall, and if the road is like this, and they can't plow, or trucks can't get down, it's not my fault, I'm not fixing the wall. Why am I responsible for fixing the wall to hold up a public right-of-way? Am I, am I, is it a, am I missing something there, or how do we, how do we protect the town?
So, um, during the subdivision approval process, it's usually the time when there's a decision made about whether the road's gonna be a town-accepted, public way, eventually, when it's all done, or whether it's gonna remain a private road. And if it's a private road, the homeowner should create a homeowners association. They should be responsible for, uh, the cost of plowing, and any streetlights.
We do that? I don't remember doing that, like with, like with Maxwell Circle or South Circle?
Here in Norwood, all the roads pretty much get accepted as town roads eventually. Um, the town has not done any street acceptances recently, since I've been here, but then again, there hasn't been a lot of subdivision activity either. Um, other towns, um, um, you know, on a case-by-case basis, some might be private roads, and they say, you know, this is, Little Cul-de-sac's too small for the town to accept, you guys take care of it. Um, but it's really, that's the, so it's not a given that it's gonna be a, a public road. And, and, and the concern you raised could be a good reason why the town or the planning board, you know, recommends not to accept the road.
But the town, the town's position has always been, as far as plowing. Well, maybe not accepting. We've, we've gone years without accepting roads. But, uh, the, the town's position has always been, uh, that we would plow and pick up trash, because these are taxpayers. You know, these people are paying taxes.
Yeah.
And, and so they just are entitled to have their road plowed and, and trash picked up, like any other road, except they're not. Unless it's deeded that way, I mean, uh, you know, I think the Lupatruze's properties next to me, they're not accepted roads yet, and, and, you know, the town plows, been plowing since he put the first course down.
Well, let me ask you, may I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So if they, if, if we don't take a, a street with four houses on it as a public way, can they still plow and pick up trash?
Sure.
Oftentimes towns, um, sometimes, it, from town to town, it, it varies, and I've seen it done in, in four or five different towns. Um, some towns take the position that even if it's a private road, they're still gonna plow it because police and fire may need to get to those homes, um, and so they need to provide emergency access. The other rationale were the ones that, that Ernie just mentioned, that, hey, these people, whether they're on a public road or a private road, they're still paying the same amount of real estate taxes, and they should benefit from the same services in return, like trash pickup and, and so forth.
In my opinion, I would really try to pull the board that this is, that's a precarious ledge that goes down there, and, you know, we'll probably all be dead by the time it maybe start, but, you know, we've seen different things fail, like the thing at the end of the street where the, the, we got a sinkhole. So maybe we could look at it and, okay, we plow the road, we pick up the trash, but we don't take it as a public road.
That could happen. We don't repave it, or, you know, whatever, but.
So Ernie raises, yeah, Ernie raises a legitimate point, and, and these, these block walls, um, I think that this one's gonna be a, I think it's, the plan said, the big blocks. So not the, not the uniblocks that are this big, but I think like the box that are almost as big as a table. Um, but, but nevertheless, i- i- it, it, it has a design life. It also might not be constructed t- the right way, and might eventually deteriorate faster. Um, and so there's a very good chance that the design life of this thing is twenty-five years, thirty years, and in thirty years, um, if it, i- it's on private property and it, it needs to be repaired or, or replaced, that there's gonna be a problem. And I'm not exactly sure how you handle that, but it's, it's a certainly, um, over a matter of time, it is gonna deteriorate, and then what's gonna happen to the folks down the end of the road if they need to cross there and that thing's?
Good question. I, someday I'll ask Mark on that. I'll ask him, because I'm sure there's other ones around town. I mean, go, you wanna see a stone wall, brick wall, go, go down by Fallout Shelter there, that were the, down the end of Vanderkorn. Talk about a brick or block wall. I wish I had the contractor saw that guy's block, but that thing is huge.
Wall, yeah.
So anyway, um, we have a, an amount of eighty, well, let's jump it up to eighty, eight twenty-two, right? Let's round up nine hundred and something thousand dollars. What do you think? Round up or round down? Thirteen dollars? Or round up to eighty-two?
What, eight hundred and twenty-two?
Yeah. Or, or just knock off the thirteen dollars, seventy-five. All right, Mrs. Holman. Okay, we'll make it eight twenty-one even. I like round numbers. All right. So the town engineer's, uh, submitted a figure, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, um, for the project. Uh, there's a fifteen percent contingency in there of a hundred and seven thousand, uh, which is good. Uh, we've up, we've gone from ten to fifteen, which I think is, is good. Uh, now again, this is, uh, Brian, so what this is, is the, is the estimate that the town engineer feels, just to do the roadwork. I mean, again, we're only con- the planning board, we're only concerned with the right of the town property, the right-of-way. What happens on the individual lots is, is not our, we're only concerned with the, the road, and, uh, his, all his figures are, have to do with the roadwork. And then as he builds, as he gets some of this stuff done, he's entitled to get some of his money back.
Ernie, could I just back up a little bit and give a little background for Brian? So, um, off of Dean Street, there's a little loop called Old Dean Street. And off of that, there's what basically is, looks like a common driveway that right now serves, um, a duplex. The, um, there was land beyond that, and the property lies on like the slope leading down to the Napanzett River. There's a, um, a power station there.
Power station beyond Dean Street.
The light department has, uh, transformers and, and electrical stuff there, and it's right, right there. So the slight, the, the, the site slopes down to the river, and it's got development constraints because of the slopes, and because of the proximity to, um, to the river, the wetlands, and the river, riverfront areas. The, um, the, the property was purchased after being on the market for many years, and I had talked to dozens of people that were looking at buying it.
Yeah.
They, um, the planning board approved a, uh, an extension of the road and the creation of three or four more lots.
Three lots.
Three more lots. The, the developer says they're gonna build duplexes on those three lots. So, um, the plan got approved, it's recorded, and now the developer's ready to start building the road. And there are provisions under the state subdivision control law that we're, we're following here. It's chapter forty-one is the subdivision control law. And the state, uh, had the wisdom to understand that there would probably be roads that were started and never finished, and that homeowners might be buying lots and homes on a road that a developer starts building, but for some reason, um, doesn't finish. And so in the state law, it has provisions to protect those homeowners. And, and the provision that we're talking about tonight is the performance bond. And the board can require, the board does require, for every project, before they can convey any lots, they've either gotta, either build the road a hundred percent till we, it's been inspected, it's all good, that's one scenario. The second is, they build the road partially, and then come in and ask for a bond, to ask to, to place a bond for the remaining cost of the road, and that's the way a lot of them do it. And then in this case, it's this scenario where he hasn't started to build, um, the road at all, but he wants to have the lots released for sale, and one of the rea- what he told me was that he wants to excavate the foundations and take that dirt and use it as fill for this road. And because the road's being a flat road on a slope like this, there's extensive cuts and fills with the construction of this particular road. So that's why we see, um, an, an eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar cost estimate to build a road, a, a short extension of a road.
Hundred-foot road, yeah.
Um, and so, uh, the board has, under state law, a few different options for bonds. Um, the best is cash, where they come in with a check, it gets given to the treasurer, treasurer puts it into a separate interest-bearing account. And then as they go along during the construction, say they've got fifty percent of the work covered under the bond done, they write a letter to the board saying, hey, I'm half done, can I have my money back? And the board can vote to release the money and installments back until he gets to the end and the project's done. Um, we, we don't like to, you know, hey, I put in the curbing, can I have ten thousand back? And hey, I put in the sidewalks, can I have twenty? We like to see significant chunks of the project done at once, uh, before they, they can get some of that bond money back. So cash, um, letters of credit, which are nothing but trouble, because they usually have an expiration date, and I learned that the hard way about thirty years ago. Um, tri-party agreements, an agreement between the bank, the planning board, and the developer, where the bank basically guarantees that, that they back up the developer. And then, um, um, bonds from a bonding company, like an assurity bond from an insurance company. So those are like the options, and it actually, the law gives the planning board the authority to say, no, we don't want a letter of credit, but we'll take a surety bond, or we'll take a tri-party agreement. So tonight's exercise is, um, we, the, the town engineer had reviewed the, the subdivision plan and recommended approving it once all the details were worked out. And now the developer says, hey, I want my lots released, because I want to dig some holes and use that dirt to build a road, so can you, can you, um, set the bond? So we asked Mark Ryan, the town engineer, to produce a, an itemized cost to complete, detailed with cost amounts and quantities, and he's done that for the board, um, and now the board is about to vote to say, okay, that's the bond amount. There's a covenant that. There's a covenant that is between the planning board and the developer. And that covenant that's recorded to registry basically says, no lots will be conveyed until the planning board votes to release certain lots in the subdivision. And so the next step, after the bond is set, I will communicate to the developer that this is the amount you need to have the bond for. He's got a bank he's working with to get a tri-party agreement. And they'll bring that tri-party agreement in, hopefully, prior to the next meeting. I'll send it to town council, to Dave DeLuca, give it a legal review, make sure that it says everything it needs to send, say to protect the town. And once he says it's okay, the board can vote to accept that tri-party agreement as the bond. And then they can vote to release the covenant or release the lots that are subject to the covenant. And the covenant document usually lists, you know, lot one, lot two, lot three. In big subdivisions, the planning board will release some of the lots, but not all of the lots. And so that's what the planning board's doing tonight, is one step that's kinda towards the 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 middle or the end of the subdivision process.
Thank you.
Why did you pick tri-party?
He picked it. It was, it's the, the developer offered that as a, as a bond. And since the board had done these before, that you, the board did with Campanelli on the subdivision on the Polaroid property, Upland Woods subdivision, a tri-party agreement was used then. So I knew that in the past, the board had accepted these.
That was, has this gentleman ever done any development?
I don't know him, but I don't think so.
So are you comfortable with a tri-party?
Yeah, well, it's, it's...
Campanelli is worldwide, so I, are you comfortable with that?
So so the planning board's not putting up the money, his bank is.
Right.
And so if he fails, we go to the bank and the bank gives us the money and we hire someone to do the work.
Okay, what's that piece of paper? How do we have to?
So that that tri-party agreement is is that contract between the three of us.
I I I understand that part of it. Is it harder to get that released than, what was?
It's safer than a credit line. It's a lot sa, it's a lot safer than a, than a line of credit.
Right, but what about the the bond?
So we'll we'll find out from from Dave DeLuca if he thinks it's okay. And, you know, you remember when we had the Maxwell Estates subdivision? The developer brought in a bond from like a surety or an insurance company or something out of state. And and to me, the yellow flag went up.
Well, yeah, tighter to chase and it costs us more to chase it. That's why I'm wondering, from an attorney's point of view, is a tri-party, if he, I mean, I'm thinking of, the one was here last week with the wall that's falling down into the grass, why can't it, LaRoe, what's the kid's name? You know, I'm thinking of him.
Yeah, Mario.
If it costs us, because a tri-party's harder for the attorney to get the money from, because now you gotta go through the bank. And so I'm just wondering.
It's, you know, so we'll know from Dave DeLuca if he has any concerns about our ability to call that bond in. Certainly Mario gave us cash and and, you know, for him, that worked out. It was a safe position for the planning board to be and have cash. But we've, we've, I recall, we've done a couple of these since I've been here in the last five years.
Right, since I've been here also. But, you know, the Campanelli or the the Regal or the, I mean, they're a little bigger fish.
Yeah, but still, it's, it's, you know, so Brian, thi- this does happen. Believe it or not, developers, you know, they are very susceptible to economic conditions. Some of them get in over their heads. And in the last five years since I've been here, we've, the board's recalled two bonds.
Really?
Yeah.
Two and, I can only remember this, this one, and I can remember Paul Angelo.
Larry David's.
Larry David, that's the one.
What was that thing on Rock Street?
Not Larry, it's not Larry David.
Not Larry David, I'm sorry. Stephen David.
Stephen David, yeah.
Do you see corporate charity bonds at all, like, were either of those instances?
Well, that, we did, we did get one that was like from, from a insurance bonding company or something, that, from out of state. And that's what was, that's what raised my eyebrows. But we brought that to town council and he said, no, I think, you know, we wouldn't have any trouble getting...
What I see in fiduciary work that I do from for my job, I've I've seen bonds, you know, five million dollar corporate charity bonds with a premium, it's only, it's maybe four thousand bucks. It's, 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 it's a viable option.
It's cheap, cheap bond, yeah.
I don't know what a performance bond is on a construction project, but, yeah. Yeah, interesting.
All right, I want to entertain a motion to set the bond at eight hundred and twenty-one thousand.
So moved?
Second.
Anything else on the motion? So you now put it to vote. All those in favor? All right, opposed? Nameless. Eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. We just saved them thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. He can buy this guy's coffee. Okay. Discussion, landscape plans and amendments to rules and regulations governing site plan review. This...
Thank you for your hard work.
Maybe, you know, ties in a little bit with some of the things Dave was talking about earlier, but...
So the information that we gave the board in in this memo and the things stapled to it was not complete. And I'll explain, the the good news is we ate, we got a brand-new copier in the office. The copier we had in there was was on on the go for a long time. It was frustrating.
Did it get, did it start copying smaller?
The way the copies automatically come out, the default is to print on front and back pages.
Yay!
And so I said to Pat, we gotta be careful now because there could be something on both sides and and we might miss something. And sure enough, that's what happened. So the the memo dated October thirtieth from me to the board. It ends at the bottom, it says, better seasonal color, and there's no period. And so here is page two. And we apologize for that. There's not much more.
Ernie, now they're making copy machines that print on the front and back, huh?
Yes.
I'm a genius. I don't know why you people don't listen to me. A genius. How long have I been asking you to play on the...
It's gonna save us money on paper, but we gotta pay attention to the page two on the back. So the the history on this is that we've had problems, various problems, with applicants presenting quality landscape plans. Oftentimes, they their landscape plans meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw, which is that two percent of a parking lot has to be green space and landscape. And over the years, we found that two percent doesn't really seem to add up to a lot. Definitely doesn't add up to Debbie's standards for providing enough green space. And we can take the McDonald's that we were talking about earlier as a case in point, that project meets the two percent. So that's one of the problems, is right now it doesn't seem like our our zoning requires enough. And I'm gonna come back to that at the end of this discussion. The other problem that we've been having is that the landscape plans need to get reviewed. And when they're done building the project and they've completed the landscaping, it needs to be inspected. And unfortunately, Patrick and I have been going out multiple times to pretty much every site plan. And telling them, you know, gee, these are all dead and these aren't big enough and these don't meet the requirements of the bylaw. And they'll go back and they'll replace the dead ones and call us back in a week or two. And and we go around in circles. I I found myself on, you know, the Wendy's and BJ's site. I've been out there looking at the landscaping at least ten times. And initially, after it was constructed, I'm I'm out there in, out there counting individual bushes, trying to determine when they're really small, if they're the right species, and and whether the count is right and whether they're in the right place. And then after, after they've, and then when we go into the inspections later on, there's there's always problems. And in an effort to try to avoid the burden on the planning department to to review the site plans and make sure that that the landscaping is the right landscaping for that particular location and that it's gonna be attractive year-round and and quality, it would be helpful to have a professional landscape architect review the landscape plans. It would also be very helpful to outsource that and have the same landscape architect go out and do the inspections. And if the applicant were paying for each time, a landscape architect had to leave their office and go do an inspection, they might, they might make sure that it looks pretty good before they called the landscape architect in for another inspection that they'll have to pay for each time. And and so, you know, for for them to call me to do an inspection doesn't cost them anything, but it usually is an hour or so to go out and and try to deal with it. And like I said, there's this one that's not resolved yet, the Wendy's and BJ's, it's not done. Been there at least ten times. And I had one last summer that I I went back four times. And and every time I went back, there were more bushes dead.
Well, how many times did you and Patrick go down to McDonald's? That was way more than four times.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And and the the one this summer, every time I went back, it was dead. And and, oh, I'm like, why are you calling me in for inspection when you got all this dead stuff? Like, what do you think, I'm I'm not gonna see that or say anything? And and so I finally, we got, went around and around after four visits, I signed off on it. I drove by a month later, there's all these dead bushes. They they didn't, couldn't get the the heads to the irrigation on the landscaping materials. And so they were just dying and nobody was really caring or paying attention. So in an effort to try to outsource this work, the review and the inspections, I'm recommending that the board require something that was already in our site plan review rules and regulations. A long time ago, over twenty years ago, the state amended state law, chapter forty-four, and they created section fifty-three G, which allows boards and committees to require an applicant at the time of an application to put a a deposit of money for a particular purpose. That money goes into a separate interest-bearing account. That money is drawn from to hire an outside expert consultant. And this could be a special legal consultant, it could be if if it's a wireless communications tower, it might be a wireless radio frequency engineering consultant, it could be a special civil engineer. Whatever particular consultant that the Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, or the Board of Health might need, this particular law, which the town adopted and is already in our regulations, can be invoked. And we can ask a a an applicant to deposit at the time of the application a chunk of money. We use that to pay an outside independent consultant. When it's done, if there's any money remaining, it goes back to the developer. The last time we did this was on the Wendy's and BJ's project, we hired a traffic engineer. And that traffic engineer was paid from a fifty-three G account that we had set up for that purpose. Traffic engineer is a is a great example of a technical area that none of us have the expertise to to really fully understand a traffic study and the nuances of it and what to look for. And so we went out and we got an expert. That was the last time we did it, a couple of years ago. So we've done it, we've done it all just a couple of years ago. So when I looked at the rules and regulations governing site plan review, I found, gee, we already have this in here. So there's really not a lot to do. So what I did was I I added to that section of the bylaw and I actually tried to go in and kinda clean some things up. And the redline version of the changes kinda shows you the extent of what what I was changing. I did realize tonight before the meeting that the revised, clean version that I gave to the board, there's a problem with the numbering. And and I I need to go back and renumber the section because I don't think it's, for some reason, it wasn't, it didn't come out the way it was supposed to. And I think there was a page, actually a page missing from the the regulations, which goes along with the previous problem of missing a page two.
Can I ask a quick question? Because I I read this and then I read the red.
Yeah.
And my, my question and a suggestion is, I decided the best way to approach a problem is simply add to the existing rules and regulations to make it clear that the board may require peer review for landscape plans. Is there some, does, we may require, could we take the may out?
So so the may is in there because it might be the not every project, if it's a simple little one?
Right, I agree a hundred percent. But in order to not be ambiguous, we can be really magnanimous and say, you don't need to do this one. But then we get to take it out.
That's why it says may, though.
No, but May, the guy that doesn't want to pony up, says, I don't wanna pony up. And then he's gonna say, well, it just says may, so now we're up for interpretation again. We can be magnanimous and say, it's required. But you know what? This is a smaller plan, so you don't have to do it.
Yeah, see, that's why we say may, because...
Well, that's why it's too ambiguous, in my, in my opinion.
It's not.
I'm gonna go out on a limb here. And I'm gonna agree with Mrs. Homewood on this one.
Uh-oh.
I know.
Uh-oh, hell is frozen over again.
I I I, and I think Debbie makes a good point on this. I mean, if if it's required, it's required, that they know going in. Now, we can waive it. If it's a small project and we say, you know, look at, you're putting three bushes in there and and what, you know, we're gonna send Patrick out in a rainstorm, he's gonna check it and that's gonna be it, we're not gonna require you. Well, again, we may not require you.
But it's just too ambiguous and it gives us no leverage. I'm not trying to put anybody out of business. I am not trying to spend anybody's money. I am just trying to make an impact on how we look.
Okay, so when you, you always talk about you may not be here forever.
Mm-hmm.
And I hate to hear that myself personally, but i- if that were the case, if it says may, or it says must, those are the people saying, oh my God, it says I must.
Uh-huh, and we can waive it.
But does, where's it, you're gonna put, we can waive it in there?
No.
Oh, well...
But we, you you are required. But we have, we're not even gonna say we can waive it, but we can, right?
But don't you have to leave good instructions for those who come behind you?
I'll leave, I'll put a note in.
To come into your footsteps?
I I believe that the the board, in their wisdom, like somebody said to me, we have a five-member board where everybody brings something different to the table. Okay, not everybody, Rob cut the blocks and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm the tree nut. And and I I think in their wisdom, we have a planning director always and we have five members who can all look at this. But if we always give, I love our businesses, I do, I'm a, but I think we ask too little. I think we have asked too little. Route one is a perfect example. And it affects our, how many, who comes into town and rents. It affects our property values, it affects our psyche.
So if it says shell, and we don't do it, someone will say, look at you, neglecting your duty.
And we, I think have, we have, we give a lot of leeway on things that we say, okay, that's why there's five of us, we can argue that point. And we want more landscaping, we, it wasn't a big deal in the fifties and sixties. And now it's a big deal. We need, I mean, we didn't recycle and now we do. So we can get rid of a provision that we don't agree with or we do agree with. But I think it's really important at some point to put our flag in the dirt and say, we love ya, come on down. Do I have a quarter for that if I use that line, by the way? Come on down, we are business-friendly and we want it to look pretty and we want you, so we're gonna require you to not send our professional out, you know, and and say, is this, I couldn't get a, whatever Latin word they use for the treat, so we're gonna require you to do that. And then the board can make the decision in their, later on, that, okay, this isn't McDonald's, this isn't Route One, this isn't a car dealer. This is, I don't know, give me an example. I'm wrapping it up, I'm just trying to sell it. I'm just selling it, Ernie. So I'm gonna fight for my, get rid of the may, it's too ambiguous.
That's what may, may does for you, though, so you do the same thing.
It just gets the attorneys more jobs.
On this point, this was something that I struggled with on how to write it. One option, so this is a decision that that's a timing issue. An applicant comes in with their application form, their plans, their their check to apply. And and we stamp it all in. We then, sometimes depending on what the application's for, we have to hold a public hearing, write a hearing notice. And it's a month from when they, a minimum of a month from when they... and it's a month from when they, a minimum of a month from when they submit their application to when they get their meeting with the planning board. And that's because of the, the hearing, um, public hearing posting requirements. You have to have an ad running in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks and then you have to wait a third week before you can hold the hearing. So, you know, no matter how you shake it, from when they come in, we've gotta write the ad and, you know, it's, it's usually about a month. Same situation for the Board of Appeals under the same law, any special permits. So when they come in and apply, that's when they, ideally, that's when they put the money down for the 53G, G account. And that's when I go and engage a landscape architect to, to do that work. If we don't have this worked out where it's a certainty at the time that they apply, um, then we wait until a month until we have the first meeting with the planning board. The board then decides, do they have to, you know, put down money for a landscape architect or not? And then we move forward from there. And so this one particular point could have a way of delaying a project's review. And so when I first wrote it, I said, well, you know, I can decide which projects, if they're on Route 1, a big project visible, yeah, we definitely want it. But if it's some little back lot off a pleasant street, do they really need to do this? You know, I can make that call. And then I said, well, you know, the board might not be comfortable with that. Maybe it should be the planner and consultant with the chairman. And, and the chairman and the planner could make that call early on when they first apply. So I ended up not putting in that it would be my call on whether they need it. And I didn't, Plan B was the, in consultation with the chairman, the planning director shall determine if you need to do this. I punted and I put may in. So that's the reason why that's there.
The rea-, I kinda, the reason I, I think, that, like, you, you made in your point, Paul, you gotta get that money when they walk in the door, or you may not get it. If you wait till, you know, we, we're into the project, we're looking at the plans, and you'd say, you know, this project is a little more involved than we once thought, we're gonna ask you to pony up the 53G money now. It's always harder to get the money once the plans are on the table and the clock is running.
Or once they've gotten what they've gotten.
So I, I think that if, if, if everybody walks in the office, everybody knows that part of the application process is on the lance, on, if they, if they, if they're required to go through site plan approval, not everybody is, that this is, this is part of the deal. Now, this is a good chance that they may get all their money back, or they may, a good chance that it may not have come to fruition. But I think if, if we're clear to everybody coming in that we're gonna do a, we're, you know, we're not landscape architects here, we're not gonna waste taxpayer dollars running out there 10 times to look at dead trees, that you're gonna pay for it and you're gonna, we're gonna, well, the town is gonna have a guy, you know, we're gonna pick the guy and he's gonna, you know, probably use the same guy for, you know, everybody. And, and he's gonna go out and he's gonna look at the plan and he's gonna evaluate, did you do what's on the plan? And, and, and if he, the, if you're paying for it, you're gonna, you're gonna make sure you're only gonna pay for it once. And, and I agree a hundred percent with this whole thing. But I think that if everybody walks in the office knows that if they're going through site plan approval and they're required to submit a landscape plan, that that's gonna be looked at. Just like they have to submit a drainage plan and they know the town engineer's gonna inspect it. You know, that, that, that somebody, a, a peer review is gonna happen. Now, at the point, we can, we can, it, it, tell the guy in the course of the, the thing, look at, you got two bushes here, okay? We're not gonna make you go out and hire, we're not gonna hire the landscape architect. We're gonna be putting into, you know, our provides that are gonna stay nice and green all year.
You were doing great. You were doing great.
Shall unless waived by the board, or?
I don't know. So, I mean, I kind of, uh, to Debbie's point, I kinda, I kinda think that if they know going in, there, there's, there's no, you know, well, you didn't, you know, if you put may, well, you didn't make this guy do it and, and, you know, and this guy didn't have to pay going in and, you know, and I'm paying going in.
Didn't we just ask him to make it less ambiguous? Was there anything in, in our things that we wanted to be less ambiguous about?
I know it's only a word, but you know, like, you know, lawyers are great with words.
So to, to put it out on the table, um, I did talk to a landscape architect and I got a number and I, I have to look at my notes, but what I think she said was three to $5,000 depending on the project. So it might be $1,500 to do a review, you know, a site walk initially, um, review the plans and write a letter to the board with, with recommendations as the first part of it. And then there might be like a set amount for each inspection afterwards, like $200 or something like that.
And then we're not gonna get, they didn't have this plant. And are we gonna change the thing that we only do little flat plants? Like, remember we let the skating club, they said, I don't want those little low plants, cause the, I'm gonna, and, and you and I, we've talked about this. Why do we have 22 little flat bushes that the snow's gonna get dumped on, on commercial property?
Let's, let's, let's talk about that in five minutes, uh, cause I do wanna come back to the types of plantings and what it's on. Um, so it's, uh, it, you guys make the call on how you want me to draft that. I am gonna have to go back and I think fix the numbering on this, cause I didn't, I didn't get it right.
I think, I think, my, my opinion is that you know, you know going in.
Is that supposed to be how it works?
Want a motion?
Well, it's, Rob, anything to weigh in?
I, I tend to agree with you, Ernie and Debbie. Um, if it's clear cut in the beginning, we ask for more and then we can give relief later.
Like they say, it's always better to, you know, ask, ask forgiveness than ask permission, right?
May, I make one more.
As your grandfather would say, don't come in here with your crocodile tears. And tell me you couldn't, you know,
Carter had two fenders, more fenders now, he's got one.
Rose bush and a, and a...
Can I ask one more question, sir?
Yes.
Um, we have noticed that 2% parking lot does not provide much landscaping. Again...
So let's, that's what I wanna talk about a minute, but first, closure on this one. So how do you want me to word that? You wanna leave it as may, you want me to put shall, how do you wanna do it?
I, I'm, a, a motion, I'll take a motion.
That we change may to shall.
Second, on that?
All favor?
Nope.
Oh, second, second.
Second.
All right. Anything else on the motion? Okay, so the wording of this movement is from may to shall. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? Opposed. Three, one. Shall, it shall be done.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll make that change in may.
In may?
I think we should wait till June. All right. So that's the first part of it. So, so to, to wrap up this part of the discussion, these are, what we're doing is proposing changes to the Planning Board Rules and Regulations Governing Site Plan Review. The legal process to amend this does not require a town meeting vote.
It doesn't?
Alls it requires is for us to hold a public hearing. We will put a, a, a legal ad in the paper which explains why we're having a public hearing and when. And then, um, the public will have the opportunity to come in and comment. We'll hold a public hearing. And, um, then the board can, after that hearing, vote to adopt these regulations. We might wanna change them again based on something someone in the audience says that we're not anticipating. But alls we have to do is run an ad in the paper explaining we're having a hearing, what it's for, hold that meeting, that hearing, get any public comments that there are out there and then make a decision whether or not to change the rules and regs. The rules and regs that are in place now were adopted in 2010.
Okay, and when could, when would we be doing that?
So we, that could be done, you know, in December or next month.
We don't have to go to town meetings, so there's no...
So I just need to write a hearing, if the board says, go ahead and write, and advertise a hearing, amend these, give you a clean copy and, um, we'll schedule a hearing.
Can I ask one more question?
Well, let's, let's, Paul, move on.
Well, no, because...
So, so, um, what I'd like to have the board do now is to vote to, um, to tell me to, to schedule a hearing because it's your intent that you wanna amend these rules and regulations accordingly.
What's, just before we, uh, have that motion, was there, you wanted to talk about increasing the parking?
Yeah, so...
I mean, not increasing the parking, but increasing the amount of green space required?
So, um, as a, as a connected but a separate issue, cause now we're going from rules and regulations, we're going to the zoning bylaw. And so the landscaping requirements in the zoning bylaw is where that 2% rule lives.
And that has to be town meeting.
And that requires a town meeting vote.
Okay.
So I'm also
I was confused.
throwing out for discussion, um, whether or not you wanna, um, for the may town meeting, do a zoning bylaw amendment to the landscaping requirements. And there's a, there's a few directions this could take. I've identified, um, um, a couple of things that I think need to be changed and I explained those in my memo. The first one is, is that we require 2% landscaping. It appears that that just doesn't give us a lot. And what it's resulted in is on a case-by-case basis, one of our board member engages in negotiations for more than 2%. And, and I've said to Debbie many times, you know, I can't, I can't try to negotiate that. I'm just here to make sure that they're following the zoning bylaw. If you wanna do that, you know, that, go ahead, but I can't really get engaged in asking for more than what the legal requirements are.
So just, Paul, just, uh, in, interrupt one second. When, just so we're clear, when we're talking 2% landscaping, we are not talking green space, are we?
It, I think, I'm using the terms interchangeably.
Okay.
And so, so say you have a parking lot and it's got perimeter areas and then it's got landscaped islands, 2% of the total area is supposed to be
Green.
pervious. With mulch, grass, you know, plantings of some sort.
So...
I revise...
So, so lawn and lawn constitutes landscaping, right?
Yeah. No, we've had sites, um, that, that, you know, they'll just, alls we're gonna do is propose a whole bunch of pine bark mulch and we'll put a tree in the middle. And that's not what we look at as adequate landscaping, but that's the 2%. So what I haven't done here is I haven't done any research on landscape bylaws. I haven't checked to see what other towns have. There, so there's two recommendations I, I would make on our existing zone requirements. One is that 2% to increase it. And I throw out five as a number for a discussion point. And the other is that our bylaw says everything has to be in evergreen. When we had the McDonald's up on Route 1, um, I told them, you know, why don't you put something, some seasonal, why don't you put some flowering shrubs in for the springtime? And the landscape architect pointed out to me that our bylaw prohibits that. And I said, I don't care, put some hydrangeas in.
Get some rhododendrons in.
And, and so, well, rhododendrons are evergreen. They're green all year long. But what you end up with is a whole bunch of hollies, hollies, inkberries, rhododendrons, and, and the list is pretty short. And, and, you know, around here in New England, we have beautiful spring flowers with, with forsythia and lilac and hydrangea. There are other opportunities for seasonal mums in the fall and tulips in the spring, but our bylaw doesn't really get into that. So, um, I'm recommending that we, we change it to say not just evergreens, but a mix of seasonal, um, you know, flowering shrubs and evergreens. So that's two simple amendments that we could make in may. The other option is you tell me, Paul, I want you to research some landscape bylaws from other towns, come back and give me, you come up with a revised bylaw that might go beyond that. Or the third option is you say, Paul, why don't we go out and have a landscape architect review our bylaw and make recommended changes? So those are three kind of approaches. One is the very simple, I can go in and make a couple of quick changes, 5% less, you know, flowering shrubs and be done with it. Or, Paul, do a little research, Pat and Paul go collect bylaws from half a dozen other towns, we analyze what they have, we do a, a little bit of a rewrite. Um, or we go outside and we pay a landscape architect to do a review.
Wait a minute. They're all on, may I?
Let me just ask one question first. What would it cost us to have a la- Option two is too much work for you and Patrick. You, we got too much going on with Route 1 corridor and everything else going on. How much would it cost for us to have a landscape architect do this for us?
So if it's just a bylaw review, I'm gonna guess a couple thousand dollars.
Can we afford it?
I think we can.
I would, I would like to take that off of your plate and put that and have a professional look at it. This is just my opinion. If we can, if we can afford to, to have them do that and come back with a, with a, a recommendation. I would like to see the 2% raised. Again, we can always come, cut it back. Because I look at some of the factories like down, or some of the buildings down, say, on Vanderbilt. Now, there's a, like in the, there's a building in the middle and it's block topped right up to the street. Well, you know, the, the only plantings they have is by their front door on some of those buildings down in Vanderbilt, and that's just the way like this. You know, we're gonna ask them to dig up the tire and, and put in grass, you know, no. But we can always, you can always cut it back. But I, how's the rest of the board feel about, about seeing if we can get a, an, our landscape architect to, to take this off of their plate? I mean, that's...
That's reasonable.
I mean, if, if the, if it's prohibi-, if it's price prohibitive, Paul? I mean, if it's, you know, doable, not prohibitive. If it's prohibitive, we can't do it, obviously, but...
So we have plenty of time between now and may.
Yeah.
Now's a good time to have this discussion, cause it, it can all go through without being a rush. Why don't I just start with contacting a couple of landscape architects and saying, give me a price to review this section of the zoning bylaw and to make recommended change?
Recommendations.
I can come back to the board in two weeks at our next meeting, tell you what it would cost. And I'll verify whether or not we have enough.
I think that's a, a great idea and, and I would like it to be a substantial change because we've, we did a little something in 2010, but we're not, we're not even keeping up with today's standards. And they're gonna get more stringent and, you know, I, I'm not a global warming nut. I'm just a, let's make it look nicer nut. So...
There may be stuff in our, that's really missing in our bylaw that should be in there. And it's some of the common things that you'll see in bylaws that says that you should use drought-resistant native plant species. And I don't know that we have that in the bylaw now.
Yeah.
Um, things that don't require a lot of water.
They'll look at the species and all of that.
And if it's too restrictive, we can be magnanimous. We can say, okay, these tree, you don't like these tree. I mean, I look at Lincoln, the amount of money and time everybody spent on Lincoln, the Lincoln dealer down there? Lincoln, the two car dealers on one.
Yeah.
Owen.
Hunt, Chambers, Fomo, Lincoln.
We can't put trees, we can't put trees. And now they've got bushes that are about this high and you can't see the cars. I have no idea what those cars are behind there. Now, I actually go to that dealer. But it makes no sense. They've got $60,000 cars and the bushes are right up in front of...
Well, we required that, Debbie.
Right, but we should be, we required a certain amount of landscaping and I asked for trees. A tree, oh no, they're gonna fall on our cars. Now you can't see your cars. So there's a million ways to do this that would make more sense. They didn't do it in Westwood, you can see all of his fancy cars that...
So to your, you, you mentioned the Boston skating club and how when we were reviewing their project, they said, listen, we don't wanna plant a bunch of bushes in the islands of our parking lot because when the snowplows come along, they're gonna crush those bushes and they're gonna eventually die. The, the consultant to the applicant said, we've done this on, on lots of sites and, and the, the bushes just don't last well. There are certain bushes that can take burial, like Rosa regosa, that used to get buried with sand and popping up. But they said, we'd rather do trees. I thought trees was a better solution, a better option than the bush.
I think it's a, it's, it's...
Again, substantial changes, cause I think we're, we're in, we're in the 40s here.
Yeah, but I don't think we have to be so, I think we can be reasonable. Somebody would say, I'd really prefer trees.
Okay. With your percentage.
It's your, it's your property if you want, rather have trees. I'm not gonna be the guy to tell you can't have a tree.
I agree. I, I agree, but I think we need to be less ambiguous. And I would like to say, we're only at 2% now and we know what 2% looks like. Let's take McDonald's on Broadway. Broadway? Broadway, yeah. Let's take, and know that that's 2%, that little, I have pictures if you'd like them.
No, we're good.
Okay. And, and we're going to 5%. And if we're gonna do all this work and spend this money, could we go to 7%?
Well, I wanna see what other towns do. I, 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 this is why we wanna bring in an outside expert to see how other towns handle. I don't wanna be
Okay.
way more than, I wanna be in the wrong town.
All we have to do is look at Dedham and they're, I think, eight and a half?
Let's give a sh- I tell you, you talked about fall mums. I'll give a public shout out here to Rivers Edge down on Route 1. They did a beautiful job, but, I mean, they must, I don't know how many...
River Ridge?
River Ridge, River Ridge, not Rivers Edge, Rivers, River Ridge. Uh, the, uh, for the Marriott up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The entrance to that is, they, whoever takes care of that entrance is beautiful. Uh, they have got the fall mums, the yellow and the, and the brown in there and, and they got hundreds of them. And it looks beautiful. It looks great. So shout out to them and also... So shout-out to them, and also, Factory Mutual has always done a great job with their landscaping as well. So that, thank you to those two.
Shaw's looks nice.
I gotta tell ya, that was my mistake, and I'll publicly admit it. The parking lot looks beautiful. Drive around it, it's a nightmare.
It's better than it wasn't.
Maybe. I'll never go, I'll never, what we sacrificed for wide grass strips at Shaw's, it was taken away from driving lanes.
No, no, is it that, or where everybody's backing out into each other?
It's, you're trying to get in there, and people are backing out. They, we had them build that thing in front of Papaginos that just the kids hang out in. It's a waste of space. We should've widened that. I'm sorry to the town for voting for that.
So, I would, I would like to say, go a higher percentage, and then say, because we never can get more, but, okay, if we go arbitrary, 8%, and they can only get us to 6?
Well, let's get, let's, to move, to move this along.
Got it.
Let's have Paul get a hold, and see where we go, and let's get the professionals involved.
So I'll have a price quote for you for the next meeting.
Fine.
And we'll decide how to go forward.
Is there something in these? Remember how we always say we're overparked?
Yes.
Is that in, that's not in the landscaping plan, though?
So, this is parking regulations. And our parking regulations are very outdated. We do require more parking than is actually needed. Back in, in the 80s, the idea was, "All right, we gotta design this parking lot for a retail store."
They're putting blacktop.
So that it can accommodate the Saturday before Christmas's traffic. And, and so for the 10% time of the year, you design 100% of the parking requirement, parking spaces. And the planners have, over the last 10 years, started to change their thinking on that. And now they are going towards saying, instead of a minimum number of parking spaces for use, they're saying a maximum number to stop this sprawl of blacktop that we have in suburbia in these malls with just vast parking lots that are 75% empty most of the time. So it's an environmental issue. The parking requirements, I think we should put that on the list for maybe next year, or, you know, we don't have the time to do that now.
We can wave them down.
Because of what we're dealing with, with the Route 1 corridor study and some other stuff. So I don't wanna take that on my plate. But I, I think that we do need to visit our parking regulations. And that's another opportunity where we might wanna bring in a consultant. Or, if given enough time, Pat and I can come up with some recommended changes.
It almost seems as if there's a, there is a connection between the two, though. Because if you've got less parking, you can put more green in.
We can wave down the parking, and we do it.
Well, that's why a percentage of the parking lot is a good, you know, ratio approach to it.
So we'll see what the consultants think. They might, you might find yourself kinda tying the two together somehow. At least get, or get more of a discussion on, on both, maybe.
So do we fix the parking by requiring more green space? And that just shrinks the-
Well, that's what he's talking, that's what Joe just brought up.
Why didn't I say that?
Is that what you said?
Exactly what he just-
Okay.
And you have to say, "Mama, may I?"
Yeah, it's his lawyer talk, you know?
All right, so, anything else on this, Paul? Great. Now, we're gonna move on to updates, department updates. You're gonna fill us in. Ted Brovitz is on board.
Yes. I can give you a quick, quick stash report on a few things, if you'd like.
Yep.
I don't have one in writing for you tonight. As you know, you might have seen me taking notes a little more detailed, because we have no recording secretary in the room. I'm working with HR, and we've had a lot of interest in the position. 10, 10 people have submitted resumes. I interviewed one on Friday. I interviewed another woman today. And there's a third person that we're in the process of scheduling an interview later this week. And I've got, the resumes keep coming in, and I'm explaining to people from the get-go, "This is not a full-time job, working for the town. It's just, you know, planning board meetings." So we're in the process of hiring someone to record the, take the minutes for the planning board.
Claire?
Interesting.
No?
Haven't approached her.
Today's her birthday.
Today is her birthday. Happy birthday, Claire.
Happy birthday, Claire.
Pat had to leave the room and go to the school committee meeting to talk to them about the Green Communities program. The law requires, as you know, a series of things that the town has to do or adopt to be designated by the state as a green community. The final thing that's the most involved is an energy reduction plan. And Pat's been taking the lead on this, working with a planner from the Metropolitan Planning Council, Regional Planning Agency. We got a technical assistance grant from MAPC. They've designated a person to help us get designated as a green community. And she's been focusing on the energy reduction plan. That piece of, of this project involved getting a listing of every town building and every town vehicle. And then getting the utility costs, whether it's fuel for the vehicles, natural gas for the buildings, or oil for the buildings, heating oil, depending on how they heated.
And there it is.
There it is.
And, and then the, the Green Communities program requires that, over a five-year period of time, you reduce that energy consumption by at least 20%. And so, the energy reduction plan has to list all those buildings, and then here, there's-
What's the timeframe?
Within five years.
20% in five years?
20% within five years.
Let me put on this letter.
That's kind of aggressive.
So the, um, the plan will say that, you know, we can replace a boiler on this school building. We can replace windows on this one. We can replace all the lights with energy-efficient LED lights. And it gives an estimate for the amount of energy savings. That plan has to be voted on and approved by the Board of Selectment, and by the, the school superintendent has to write a letter saying that he approves it. And he wants to make sure that it's okay with the school committee to, for him to approve it. The reason why the schools are involved is because they own most of the buildings in the town. So after the state, so we have to submit all of this information by November-
22nd.
22nd. And then the state will say whether or not they're gonna designate us as a green community. If we are designated, there are competitive grants where we can get grant money, match it with some local money, and do these things to save energy. And so, it's a long-term project that will hopefully eventually reduce the town's costs for energy, and it will be the town's contribution to, to addressing climate change and global warming by, by energy conservation, reducing the amount of emissions that come from our buildings and our town vehicles. It also requires that, for certain town vehicles, not trucks or heavy equipment or police cruisers, but for certain town vehicles like regular passenger cars, that when you go to replace those, you replace them with more energy-efficient, fuel-efficient vehicles that use less gas. Doesn't require that you go out and buy Priuses or Desus.
Prius, yeah, I could see, totally driving up Prius or-
There's some targets for fuel, gas mileage that the state wants you to have.
That's pretty aggressive, 20% in five years.
So, we are, again, behind the curve on this. 240?
So, yeah, 240 communities have already adopted it. 37, including us, are planned for designation this year. And, what was I gonna say? So, the 20%, so I just came to talking about it. The 20% reduction within five years. I don't know if I missed when you first brought it up. That's more or less a guideline, or a path that you have.
Target?
It's a target. It's, it's a goal in every, you know, every meaning of the word. So if we cannot get that goal within five years, there's, you know, there's no one gonna be coming trying to get their money back from the state. It's more or less, we're aiming to get that goal done. If it's feasible within five years, there's competitive grants available to reach that goal. You know, but it's, it shouldn't be done in a way, you don't wanna impact the budget for the sake of just making sure you get this. So you wanna make sure, obviously, everything runs smoothly, and, and, and no expenses are taken away from the budget just to go solely towards these projects. But it is the goal to, you know, reach and apply to these grants, and try to make the best effort possible to bring energy, you know, conserve energy through different building improvements.
May I ask Patrick a question?
Yes.
Thank you. So let's say hypothetically, they're gonna redo the heating system.
You shall, you shall ask a question.
I shall.
Not me, you shall.
You must.
So they're gonna get a new heating system at the school. You know, the HVAC needs to be replaced. So you do, would you, would it be like a mass save? So if you get a more efficient one, the state gives you, even for something as big as a HVAC for a school or a municipal building? Is that something that's in the offing? No? Yes?
I'd have to look into, so there are probably different programs and different grant guidelines that-
Because if you buy this one, you use more oil or gas for it. But if this one over here uses less, but it's another $20,000 more, you know? A more efficient-
The state has negotiated prices on a wide range of commodities and services. And if you, if you procure certain things through COMBIES, the state program, you get a discount because-
Even without this green thing?
They negotiated it with whoever, and they said, "Okay, if you can give us, you know, get all these towns to buy from us, we'll sell it to you for lower." So there may be under COMBIE, some state program, that when we go to do something, it gets part of a bulk already negotiated price.
Okay.
See Kathy Connie on that.
Okay.
Yeah, Kathy's the one that's in charge of that.
She procures all that stuff. But any boiler today, or anything that they're replacing, or all these energy-efficient, I mean, it's a, the boilers that they put in now at the Civic, it's about the size of that thing. I mean, the whole thing is a computer program.
But they're more, as you get a more efficient one, they're more expensive.
They're not putting coal in them anymore.
No?
No.
Damn off, get rid of that coal bin in my basement.
So, Pat's been working diligently on the Green Communities designation, and we're coming up to the finish line this month to get everything in. The Route 1 corridor study, I gave the board a little memo and a map of the study area. I sent that to Ted Brovitz, the consultant, and he said, "You know, gee, that's an awful big study area, let's talk." So we're gonna have an onsite meeting next week, and we're gonna get together, go over the limit of work, go over the project, and get them going on it. He's got another consultant that he works with that was also working on the MUOD bylaw in the background. He's a landscape architect, and so I'm gonna meet with, with both of them next week, and we're gonna have our first kinda face-to-face kickoff meeting to get the project going.
The price is the price.
Yeah, the price is the price.
I mean, I doubt if I would sit-
And the, you know, the rationale that I used in where I drew those lines had to do with where the existing commercial development was. And I really tried to stay away from any residential areas.
Pretty much followed along with it.
So if he thinks this is too big a space, what does he think is not? Is half of it, or, I mean, if you're-
We're gonna, we're gonna have that conversation.
All right.
The Everett Street open lot storage case, I met with John Glossa, the engineer for the project, and Mark Ryan today. And we told Mr. Glossa what he needs to provide us for that site plan. And again, this is the one that, that they're refusing to go through site plan review because they think they've already got all the permits they need from the Board of Appeals. But they're willing to work with us on that. And so I think we're gonna be able to work through that and get some, some stormwater management in there to protect the, protect the environment.
Are they gonna come before us, those? Are we gonna get any, we're not gonna get any sand fencing or landscaping or any of that?
Well, they're proposing beautiful arborvitaries all along the road that will screen the parking lot, along with a nice shiny gavani.
I am thrilled with arborvitaries that cover up dumpsters and screen the road from a bunch of cars.
So they are proposing those five-foot-on center, which, when they grow up, should be adequate, should be fine.
Am I gonna still be alive?
Yes. So we're working through that problem.
Don't be so fatalistic.
I talked today with a affordable housing consultant that's been hired to run the lottery for the 10 affordable units at Regal Lofts. And I asked that consultant if the property has been sold, and she indicated that it was sold to a company called Torrington Properties, Boston. So Mr. Duffy no longer owns the property. He sold it. And to move forward with leasing it and finding tenants for the 10 affordable units, this woman's been hired to run that lottery process and to income-qualify those people and to work on getting the affordable units filled.
Just so people in our listening audience here, anyone who's interested, Paul, in one of those 10, to get into that lottery, how, is, do you know at this point how that, who they would contact, or how they go about doing that?
Yeah, they would, they would contact Maureen O'Hagan, who is the affordable housing consultant, and I'll-
Put something in the paper, maybe the paper will-
And I asked Maureen to let me know when the lottery was so that we'd have that information. So we can, we can connect people to that consultant on when the lottery is and what that process is.
Thanks.
And the last item I have is we continue to proofread, work on the Open Space and Recreation Plan. I'm about halfway done. I get sidetracked on other things. But we're proofreading that. It's been submitted to the state for their review and approval. And we're gonna bring the committee back together. I think we're gonna need to hold a public hearing on the plan, which will probably be like in January. I also recall that I think the planning board and the Board of Selectment need to like vote to adopt the plan. And I'll verify, I know the Selectmen have to do it. I think the planning board does, but I'll verify that. So we're in the process of wrapping up the work on that plan.
All right, anything else?
Will you put in to have a public hearing for the, oh my God, landscape? Would you, would I, would, do I, you want me to make a motion?
No. Because we haven't even-
I gotta verify what that, those requirements are to finalize the plan and officially adopt.
Let's figure out, let's get everything that we need to do, get done first, and then we'll do that. So we're not rushing to, if we, if we announce we're gonna have a public hearing in two weeks, now you're putting these guys under the gun to get all that. So let's get all our, there's no time, there's no time thing here. It's not like we gotta be ready for a warrant or something like that. So let's get our i's and t's crossed, all that stuff, and then we can announce it, and we'll have all our information in front of us.
Okay.
With that-
Do you wanna do something with that?
Oh, everybody got this invitation to Helen's? Oh, before, other thing. Wednesday, we have another session?
So Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, I'm sorry.
Thursday on the 6th, we have our second training session.
It's this Thursday.
For planning board and Board of Appeals members. The subject of this training is special permits and variances. Um, it will be held at the police and fire station community room at seven PM on Thursday, the sixth.
That's pretty interesting, it was good, Thursday, Thursday night.
The seventh?
This Thursday, yes. Seven o'clock at the fire station.
Wednesday is the sixth?
Wednesday, so it's Thursday.
Okay, alright, okay.
It was pretty, the last one was pretty good.
Yeah, so I think that's Thursday.
Thursday is the seventh.
It is?
Yes, Friday is the eighth, Saturday is the ninth.
I think it's Thursday.
I thought you.
Six, it's the one.
I thought you told me it was, I thought you'd say, I read it was Wednesday.
Alright, so it's Wednesday.
Wednesday at seven o'clock at the police station.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, you all got this note that Mrs. Donahue has offered to, uh, feed us, uh, that's before the, uh, twelve-two meeting. Um, that would be at five o'clock at her house. Well, we have a seven o'clock meeting that night. Um, we, do we have anything on the agenda for that night?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet, so, providing everybody, this, this could subject to change. You know, Paul is feeling real, is feeling good right now, he may not feel as well next week, or whatever, we hope he is. But, uh, let's, uh, go on the assumption that, that this is still on. Do we want to move our meeting to seven thirty that night, or do we want to, um?
We can do that, that's not a problem.
Um, I'm just thinking time, you know, by the time you get there and you, or, and, and don't, you know, don't, don't load us up with anything too heavy that night, if anything. Do we have another meeting in December?
Uh, yeah, I forget, I forget too, the, um.
The second and the.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, so, yeah, the, so I mean, if you lighten us up, lighten the load on the second, that wouldn't be the worst thing. No, uh, we'll, that, we'll get more information on this as time, as Paul will.
You want us to schedule the meeting for seven thirty, though?
Yeah, let's plan on seven thirty for that night, is everybody in agreement on that?
Yep.
Yep.
And if we have one.
Okay.
Um, that would be great, cause we know when you get to Helen's, there's never just one thing, it's a lot of food. And, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Although it's favorable, opposed, unanimous, good night.